Priors of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance of the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread of all town facilities, to prevent the spread and all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, access through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so as reasonable public access is afforded to, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the planning board is convening by Zoom video conference, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Using a smartphone, tablet, or computer, go to zoom.us and enter the meeting number or call 888-475-4499. The meeting number for this, the meeting ID number for this meeting is 871-845-75947. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that to take care not to screen share your computer. Any broadcast may be captured by the recording. I'm going to now turn the meeting over to Mr. Allison to proceed.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Adam. So we have opened the meeting and we have, well, we'll call it to order. We have taken a roll call, four out of the five, potentially the fifth one still not there, but that's right. So first off, is there any public comment not in, not, not to do with anything on the current agenda? I don't see any hands. Okay. So move right into the first agenda item is a public hearing for Northfield Road, a scenic road. And I need to read the little ditty. So Town of Lunenburg Public Hearing, the Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on July 27th, 2020, 6:35 PM, not in Town Hall, not on Main Street, to hear and review a request under MGL Chapter 40, Section 15C, Scenic Road designations, and under MGL Chapter 87, Section 3, cutting of public shade trees. Application is to remove six small trees, one large tree leaning towards Northfield Road, and create two driveway entrances off Northfield Road, which will be located across the street from 499 Northfield Road. Current site address is 300 Holman Street West, MAP 021, parcel 0011. Owner Darren C. Massey, Lunenburg, Mass. Applicant is Bray Ave. 9 LLC, 493 Lancaster Street, Leominster, Mass. Materials are available digitally or digitally on request by emailing mboggio@lunenburgonline.com. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. This meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable. This is a big repeat of what we said earlier. To participate remotely, so Alvin said. So with that, do we have the applicant and/or the applicant's representative with us?
I'm the applicant for Bray Ave. 9 LLC. So I'd like to take whatever questions you may have.
I will open it up to the board. Okay. Then I will, go ahead.
So, you know, I have a couple of questions relative to the stone wall. And the pictures that were submitted in the packet don't really show the stone wall. So can the applicant, is this the property in which the stone wall was disturbed on the scenic road and now they're proposing to put it back on either end of the driveway? Is that my understanding from reading this packet?
Yes.
May, I'm Ed McSweeney. Can I, I'll, may I tell you the process we used to more or less be here tonight talking to you? So Adam informed me that Northfield, this is a while ago, that Northfield Road is a scenic road. I am familiar with the process that I, you need to come in front of a board of folks like you and explain what you try to do. So the first thing I did is where the driveway comes out, there will be one driveway that's a shared driveway. So if I'm standing on the street looking, that is the driveway to the right-hand side. Then there was a, the second driveway to the left-hand side will serve a single-family home. So the first thing I went is down to see the director of DPW. I explained to him what I want to do. I then said, hey, I'm going to go market and can you, at your convenience, go take a look and I'll come back in a few days. So a few days later, I went back and Jack basically said, Ed, the location's good. I noticed that you're trying, you've picked the two areas where the stone wall on both locations is basically missing. And I said, correct. It so happens that'll line up where we can service the garage to the house. So that's the two areas. Okay, I said, Jack, really, the one on the right-hand side, there is a hump in the road. So from a viewpoint, that is also much beneficial to us if you'll allow it because of, from a safety point of view. And Jack's response was, yep, I support it. He said, Ed, because it is a scenic route, be real, real careful of disturbing the trees. Now, I noticed some of them are broken, so it's not a big deal, but they want you to be real careful what is removed there. I said, thank you. That was that. Then as I prepared the document, I said to Adam, I said, look at Adam, the stone wall on both driveways, both to the left and to the right, is in tough shape. I said, if we're allowed, we will restore those, you know, say 20 feet to the right, 20 feet to the left. So in the areas where we're putting the two driveways, we will clean up the area once we remove the trees and we will fix the wall around the area going into the driveway. And that's the extent of my conversation with Adam. So that's who I stand. So where you see the stone wall now being disturbed, it has been like that at both locations for I don't know how long, but since we've been doing our due diligence on the land for the past year, that stone wall, both, both locations, that's how the stone wall was a year ago. So it hasn't gotten any better, hasn't gotten any worse.
Is this the property, Mr. Chairman, or Adam, in which the agricultural, the architectural preservation district had concerns about the removal of a stone wall?
It was, excuse me, it was the Historical Commission who brought the board. It is. And I think what happened was, gee, I want to say two, two and a half years ago, this property was the subject of a forest cutting permit. And the, the loggers came in from around where the, the house that we're not talking about a driveway for was. And if I'm not mistaken, that's the area where the stone wall was removed or damaged. My understanding from speaking to a few people around is that this stone wall has been there in questionable condition for a period of time. There is evidence of a stone wall, but it's, until you get into the property, it's harder to see. It's not like some of the more formal stone walls. If I recall correctly, when they did the logging, most of the entry was down closer to the corner and then up off of Holman Street. But it is the same property, yes.
Because my understanding of the cutting, based on the Conservation Commission hearings and some of the hearings that were held relative to the, to the forest cutting and the wetlands, was that the access for the cutting was off of Holman Street. So you're saying that you believe that they came in through Northfield Road?
If I remember correctly, when they were doing it, I don't know if it was the initial access or they did something to make it easier to get the, the large trucks out and to pull them onto Holman Street and then out onto Northfield, but there was a small pad in the area of this corner here.
Okay. So if, I know forest cutting plans are exempt from many regulations. Are they exempt from scenic road regulations?
Not to my knowledge. They tend to be exempt from stuff environmentally based.
So whether they came through Northfield Road or Holman Street really is not relevant. At some point in, in the two-year span, and I'm not saying Mr. McSweeney was, was the individual who did it, but at some point in time during work on this property, this stone, stone wall is disturbed in violation of the scenic road bylaw.
That is what we have been told.
I actually have another question, Mr. Chairman, if, if anyone else doesn't, I don't want to take all of the questions, but I also have a question about the disturbance on the property. When you take into account the driveways, the construction, why is a stormwater permit not required?
A stormwater permit will be required when they, when they tip an acre of disturbance.
Okay. And what do you mean, when they tip an acre of disturbance?
Well, when a total acre has been disturbed. So two houses on 40,000 square feet, if they turned all of the earth on one or a total of 40,000 between the two, they would require a stormwater permit. And then, once they get into the backland, that will be required.
That will be required?
Will be.
Okay.
Now, I have a question on that. If they, if they phase it such that they disturb less than one acre per year, does, does that avoid the requirement of a stormwater permit? Or is it just?
Per the bylaw we have now, I believe that it does, because it says a total of, of 40,000 per year.
And, and then to clarify Paula's earlier comment or question, as far as the forest cutting, the forest cutting applies to the property under the private ownership. The scenic road bylaw applies to the town's right-of-way that abuts the private property. So regardless of chapter, the, the scenic road bylaw would still apply.
So under our existing bylaw, which we adopt, which we have in place now, you're saying that they are allowed to disturb up to 40,000 square feet per year without having to go to a stormwater permit?
Correct, according to the way the bylaw is written.
Okay. Under our new proposed bylaw, is that changed?
I will have to look at that. I, I can't answer off the top of my head.
So I just want to make a point that I would like to revisit that, because to me, it's a way to circumvent the stormwater bylaw. So I'd like to talk about that before we bring forward the stormwater bylaw. So I'd like to add that to a future agenda to relook at that.
Can we, can we addend that, given that the, the new bylaw doesn't already address that?
Yeah, I mean, we, and it's to talk about at any time, so we can look at that and, and I can get back to you.
Okay.
On the agenda and we can, we can discuss it when we, when we look over the stormwater bylaw.
Very good. So getting back to the, to this public hearing, I, I did walk the, the site, Holman Street and Northfield Road. There, there seems to be Lot 1 and Lot 2 marketed along Northfield Road. And then also, there's a mark for a driveway accessing Lot 2, is what the, what the flagging reads on Holman Street. Now, is that just a scripter's error on the, on the marking tape?
No, no, that's correct. So I'm sorry, can I talk now, Adam, or respond to that?
That's up to the chair.
Yes, please, please do.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. So we have on, there's three building lots. The first building lot that borders Northfield Road and Holman, the driveway will be located coming in off Holman Street. So that marking you saw is correct. And then going down Northfield, towards, I'm not sure if it's north or right, but towards 524, Mr. Brightman's property, the next driveway opening will be a shared driveway that will service what we call Lot 2, and then there'll be a real Lot 5. So that'll be a shared driveway for those two lots and Lot 5 will be in the near future. And then we have an agreement to purchase a piece of property from Mr. Brightman that will become its own standing lot, and that is where the second driveway entrance. So for the scenic road, it's the driveway entering into Mr. Brightman's future 40,000 square foot lot that we'll be purchasing. And the second driveway entrance is going into what we refer to as Lot 1 and Lot 5. Hope that it makes it clear to you.
Not really. So which lot number is on the corner?
That'll be Lot 2. And that will have the driveway entrance. The house will face Northfield Road, but the driveway, if you're looking from Northfield Road, it'll be a colonial. There'll be a garage on the right-hand side, the main house in the center, and on the left-hand side, a family room. And the garage on the right-hand side, the driveway will come in, straight in from Holman Road to it. And it's approximately 90 feet away from where we go through the wall to the entrance to the garage.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
So I've got a couple of issues. One is what's described as driveway number one. That doesn't appear like, I don't know if that property's under agreement, but I feel like we're taking a scenic road hearing that was intended for one set of lots, and now we've added on a third lot, and we don't have any documentation on that lot. And my second concern is Mr. McSweeney keeps referring to a shared driveway. And I feel like we really should have a better engineered plan here that describes where that driveway location is going to be. And we're going to be in a situation where, based on his sketch, we're going to need to determine whether we provide leeway for a common driveway that does not bisect a lot line versus opening a new, opening in the wall or something like that. So I, I just feel like, under the circumstances, we really don't have enough information to, you know, make an accurate call in terms of, does this make sense?
I, I completely agree.
As do I.
Now, the A and R that we received today via email, can you go back to that?
Yep. That was a draft A and R that Mr. McSweeney submitted. I did reach out to him about the presence of the lot that seemed to be off of the, the property that we know that he has under agreement. He submitted this as long, along with a form signed and notarized with Mr. Brightman's signature authorizing him to represent that property.
Okay.
But we don't have any of that.
That was emailed to us today, that, that, what we're looking at on the screen.
Okay.
What, what date was that received by planning?
It was received this morning.
That was received this morning?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Since this hearing is about driveways on a scenic road, I would agree completely with Mr. Cole that we do not have enough information about exactly where these driveways are going and what lots they're going to serve. And I share the same concern relative to the shared driveway. I'm unclear as to whether that shared driveway is going to meet our bylaw, whether it's going to bisect a lot line. I think we need a clearer plan showing the proposed driveways and the proposed lots that they'll serve. And now this addition of, of this additional parcel, I think just muddies the waters. And I think that we need to continue this hearing.
I completely agree with that. I, I also would suggest to the applicant that there was a, an engineered A and R plan submitted for the five lots, was it? Or was that also a hand sketch? This is Adam.
Oh, the, the A and R was for two lots, and it was the two lots on the corner of Northfield, Lot 1 and 2. I apologize, I thought you were talking to the applicant.
No, that's fine. So we haven't really seen anything clarifying two, three, four, or five. Is that true?
That's correct. That is correct.
So I don't really want to be talking about a scenic road application on a common driveway to lots that we haven't even seen. Does that sound appropriate?
Yes.
That's the pleasure of the board. I, I think that's completely appropriate if the board's not comfortable with, with what's in front of them.
This, this is a pretty detailed project in, in a, in a fairly sensitive area. I, I'd really not like to get any more hand sketches, not to cause excessive expense, but I, I think it's appropriate to have some engineered plans to clearly describe what's being asked of this board.
I would completely concur. And I think we also, I think we also have to keep in mind the 40,000 square foot limit. And I'd like to understand, you know, or the applicant to make sure he understands that this is a phased approach, otherwise you will trigger the stormwater bylaw.
My response to that, I am aware of that. I'm engineers aware of that. And he, and they're also aware of the covenant law that Lunenburg has in place for the storm permit. May I ask? I have no problem. We will provide the board then, if we can table this. But why have you, well, literally on the phone, can I ask a couple of questions, just so it'll help make the approval process at the next meeting go that much faster? So if I'm looking, I'll take one at a time. So looking at what I refer to as the Brightman property, that driveway is clearly marked. We're asking to enter the wall that there currently is no stone wall today. The trees are in pretty tough shape in front of that area. The plan is to basically put the driveway there going approximately, I think it's somewhere between 85 and 90 feet to the front of the garage. In the next, I will show a plan detailing that, okay? And we'll show it on the proposed A and R plan for that 40,000 square foot lot of land. Can I ask the board, is there any other items you want to see on that plan for the next meeting?
I personally would like to see all the lots that you intend to develop, at least schematically labeled and itemized, and I want to see where these driveways go. A shared driveway is a separate application. And yeah, it, we need to have-
I can appreciate that. That's, again, I'm going to get to that as the next lot. So I'm just asking specifically right now, just so I can speed up the process and not waste the board's time at the next meeting. Is there anything else that jumps out at you for that one particular lot, the Brightman lot? So basically, we're going to be asking for that location we show that is marked today with stakes, where we come through that area, we've identified the wa, the trees we'd like to remove, and then most of them are damaged, and the driveway will go straight into the garage. So and specifically on that one lot, which is not the shared one, is there anything else the board would like to see?
No. So, so what we're looking at currently, the Lot A, the 40,000 square foot lot, is what you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay. So yeah, no, I think you've, you've chosen a, an excellent location, because there's an existing barway in that stone wall that they use to access that lower portion of their property. And that is, that's ideal, because you really don't have to disturb a lot of it. So specifically for just this Lot A, and, and I'll let the other board members speak to this as well, but in my opinion, this, this, you've, you've chosen the great spot, and you're correct, there are a lot of trees that need to come out anyway. So any other board comment on this Lot A specifically?
No, I guess my only comment would be, are we going to look at this separately? I feel like now our attention's been drawn to this additional, this new lot, and if that's going to be a separate application, which it could be, or are we still going to?
No, I want to make it clear. I am agreeing with the board. I, I am going to table, I request that I table a vote tonight, and I will come back at the next meeting. What I'm trying to do is understand exactly what the board wants, so I can tell it to my engineer, so I provide Adam with the plan that shows specifically, we're asking for two driveways. That's the first driveway. So if I can more or less sum up what I've heard, there's not any, that's what I need to show, and that's what we're going to show in that location for driveway, I'll call it driveway A. Now, the next driveway, so at the next meeting, I will come forward that shows where proposed Lot 1 is sharing a driveway with what we refer to as the real lot behind it. So I will have a plan to Adam that basically shows exactly the proposed 1 lot, which was approved as an A and R plan, will show that. And then I will have what we refer to as Lot 5, the second part of the shared driveway, will be that proposed lot in the future, when we go in front of the planning board asking for approvals for what we call Lot 3, 4, and 5. But for the next meeting, for the scenic road, I will have a specific plan by our engineer that will show Lot 1, where the driveway is going to enter, as well as Lot 5, which at a future date will come in front of the board as an A and R lot, along with what we call Lot 5, 4, and 3. But for the scenic root, root meeting, the next time you have one, this lot then by the engineer will show where it comes in, where it goes into Lot 1, and then where it proceeds to go into the house in the future for Lot 5. Since we're already done the perk test, we know exactly where the houses are going to be. So basically, I will have the engineer draw a document showing that, so visually make it easier for you folks to understand exactly and to answer some of your concerns. So at the next meeting, I will then be showing you requests for two scenic driveway approvals. One for Lot A, which we just talked about, which is the Mark Brightman property we're purchasing. And he did sign off saying we had authority to talk tonight about it, as well as then what we call the approved A and R lot for Lot 1. And we will articulate what you have not been requested to vote on, but in the near future will be what we call Lot 5. And that'll be coming as a lot 5, 4, and 3 in the near future for A and R approval. So is there any questions?
Anybody?
I have a question. So I, I just want to understand, I think what, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tanner, what you're saying is because Lot A is a separate property, you're questioning whether the board should consider it as a separate application, or whether it can be bundled with the Lot 1 and Lot 5 that are currently in the, under agreement for Bray Ave. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Well, I'm just bringing it up, because when we originally got the application, this Lot A wasn't part of it. Like, the packet I have in front of me doesn't have this A and R. We haven't approved this A and R.
That's correct.
We don't have an application in front of us for the A and R. So I feel like this has been kind of added on to the original hearing, and, I mean, it's up to the applicant which way they want to do it.
I, I want to make it clear, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, sir. I think part of it is, you, you have to appreciate it from our point of view. This whole virus thing is making it difficult. Usually at a meeting, we show it and we're talking, and it's just a lot easier to communicate, okay? Our driveway 1 and 2, in the forms I filled out that Adam had sent me for the scenic road, from our point, we haven't added anything. Driveway 1 to the left was always the Brightman. We've been working with Mr. Brightman, we've done perk- We've been working with Mr. Brightman, we've done perk tests and so forth, the agreements are in, you can see why he signed off. This deal with the Brightmans have been done for a while and we're just now getting to the point because of the virus, our surveyors and engineers had just got there. But this deal was done, more or less, we agreed on a price and that we were going to do it about eight months ago. It's just this whole virus thing has slowed us down from actually producing documents. But when Adam asked me to fill out the application for the scenic root group, now the, the problem I think I have here is you're the planning board, so you're basically trying to look at both the A and R lots and then the chapter 61 releases and as well as then the scenic road. We look at it as individual issues. So in fairness from our side, when I filled out the application for the scenic road, I always was including the Brightman because we knew we're buying that lot. And the second one, now the second one, I agree, we did not do a good job about explaining the shared driveway. And we'll rectify that and it will be ready for the next meeting. So I'll, I'll try to make it crystal clear to you. But it's still two driveways that we asked originally for and we're still asking for, the scenic road approval.
Okay, well, you know, go ahead, Tanner, sorry.
Well, I mean, I'm just looking at this from a statutory standpoint. I mean, the scenic road hearing is a public hearing. We have a public announcement. It identifies who the property owner is and what the address of the property is. And I, I understand where, you know, these two adjoining properties are both kind of under the care or custody of Bray Ave where they have agreements to buy the property, but at the same time, this is the first I'm hearing of the Brightman property being involved. And I respect Mr. McSweeney's viewpoint that that was always his intent. But from where I'm sitting, looking at the paperwork that I have, I have paperwork that says 300 Holman Street. It makes no reference to 524 Northfield Road. So whichever way we want to handle it, I just am trying to be clear about it and I feel like under the circumstances, we just, we really need more information to get all this stuff nailed down.
Oh, and our response to that, I agree. That's why I have no issue tabling this and will be better. I just want to make sure when we come back at the next meeting, to save all of us some time, just like with the Brightman piece of property, you made it clear what I got to make sure I have. I'm trying to figure out now what I need to have for the shared driveway. And I have no problem working with Adam. I will have the time to supply him with more documentation that it is clear to the board. So I agree with the board. And the next meeting will come fast enough. So I have, I am not displeased at all. I'm just trying to figure out. I want to make sure I get it right for the next one so we don't waste each other's time. And that's what I'm trying to get to.
Very good. Mr. Cole brought up a very good point. In the, in the public notification of the hearing, the 300 Holman is the only property discussed, the 300 Holman West. And I'm not sure if, if we even are statutorily able to consider this Brightman parcel for this hearing as it's been advertised.
I think that the, the most appropriate course of action is you've already agreed that the, the application needs to be continued. We'll re-advertise, we'll get the information from Mr. McSweeney that you've requested and include the Brightman property in the advertisement. That allows the board to issue one decision for a single applicant that covers the totality of that frontage and it will be simpler to administer and enforce over the long term.
Yes. And I mean, as far as, as far as segmenting a project and planning board, I really don't like that. I, I, I don't like it in general. There's been multiple projects that have done this. And, and nothing, nothing to you, Mr. McSweeney. I'm just, I'm just speaking in general for our process. If there is a parcel of land being developed and the intent is to get five lots out of it, and now it tends to get six lots with an additional piece of property, I would like to see the lot lines and the houses and the driveways in one plan when we first start looking at it.
I can respond to that. So at the next meeting, I will have our engineer provide you with that. With the understanding is the following. Right now, our engineer, our surveyor, not engineer, but surveyor, has gathered a lot of what he calls the fieldwork. So he can put together a document that'll be fairly accurate, okay? And why I say fairly for the simple reason. Along, once we've got the A and R approval, let's look at lot one and two, which you folks gave us, we have put that and it's recorded. The next step is that we have to file the septic plan at the Board of Health. The Board of Health now has had that plan for two months. And they're still working and because of the virus, the response has been a little slower. Mr. Griffey has come back with a couple of comments. Our engineer has given them the input. We're waiting for Mr. Griffey to come back with more inputs. On one of the inputs, we had to go change the property line by five feet, i.e. the surveyor then had to move the back line. So that's what I'm saying. At the next meeting, until we have 100% and the planning and the Board of Health has signed off on the septic system, we think we got the lot lines correct now, but until they sign off, there is that slight chance they might want to change it a little bit. So as long as you see the plan, and then in the near future, when we bring those three back as an A and R, and if somebody says, geez, that lot line's moved a little, I just want to caution you, we're still at that stage. But for all intents and purposes, for the scenic route people, it'll be accurate enough and we'll be happy at the next meeting, and Adam, I'll work with you, we can increase, include Mark Brightman's property. We'll make a plan that's real clear where the driveway is going on his land. We'll make a driveway much clearer where it's going on lot one, lot five. And at the same time, we'll give you a document where the board can look at and you'll see plus lot five, four, and three. So you'll see all six lots and how they work together, if that's acceptable.
Um, I'm not, I'm not going to say one way or another as far as acceptability at this point, but I have a question for Adam. Do you review the documents that go to the Board of Health?
I do not.
Okay, even though they're in the same, the land use building, you do not?
I mean, the, the septic stuff is wholly the, the that's all the Board of Health's.
Okay.
I could get them and look at them if, if there was something to look at, but septic plans aren't sent around for additional review by other departments like some other permits are.
So, so these, these five now six lots, are they all avail the opportunity to get water from Northfield Road?
I don't, I believe only the ones that have frontage on Northfield would have access to water and I believe the rest would be subject to well.
Which means the, the back ones would have to have a well. And in order to, to apply to the Board of Health, you have to show them septic system, location, design with testing and location of a well, location of a house, location of lot lines. I, I can't believe that they have submitted anything similar to this to the Board of Health for approval.
I'm not sure of a question, to be honest.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with you. I mean, I worked for the Board of Health for a lot of years and their full engineering design plans. But I, I do want to go back to one, I do want to go back to one of the comments that was made about some lot lines might shift. To be honest, I'm concerned about that, especially if it's lot lines associated with the shared drawing, a shared driveway. I mean, if we're approving, I understand that the scenic road is different, but one of the openings for, on the scenic road is for a shared driveway and we don't know where those lot lines are.
Oh, no, on that name you will know. Let me be real clear on the, on the septic plan. I'll be real clear.
An A and R plan?
On our detailed septic plan, the 40,000 square foot lot where the septic, where the perk tests were, when the engineer submitted them to Mr. Griffey, Mr. Griffey made the comment, hey, on the break area, I want to have that a little bit further out. And we then, the surveyor then came back and said, okay. And this was prior to the A and R. So again, it was prior to before the planning board approved lot one and two A and R. But we had to move that line eight feet. And that's what I'm saying. At this point, I'm going to show you for the next meeting, for the scenic road, for all intents and purposes, the lot lines you see for lot three, yeah, for lot three, four, and five will be accurate. But until we basically overlay and prior to them going formally in front of the board for A and R approval, a lot line could change. And that's what I'm saying is the next meeting for the scenic road is putting, and, and, and that's what we need, is putting the cart in front of the horse. So at that point, we have formally submitted to the planning board the A and R. They're not in cement. As far as where the driveway entrance is, that has nothing to do with where the septic systems are. Those lot lines will be firm, so they won't move. So when we show you on the plan where the shared driveway is, that's where it's going, both for lot one and for lot five. That's not going to shift.
Is the lot line between lots one and lot five subject to shift?
No.
But I have yet to see any lot line between lot five and lot two or whatever. I don't, I don't, I see little hand-drawn dash lines on the plan.
No, and that's what I said, at the next meeting you will, prior to the next meeting. That's why I'm tabling tonight and I will provide that documentation. So I mean, I understand, I believe I understand what the board's looking for.
Okay.
And in fairness to you, you don't have that information yet, but you will shortly.
Very good. So, so technically, are you looking to withdraw this from this hearing without prejudice and then re-advertise and have a new hearing? Or are you looking to?
Absolutely. Nope, absolutely.
Okay. Adam, is that, is that, does, does it have to be that way? I mean, I, I think, I think it kind of does because of the advertisement.
I think either way, the, the sum total of what happens is the same, whether you continue it or he withdraws and, and resubmits.
Continuing.
I would ask Adam, if I may. Adam, with your experience of, of time and effort, especially since we have the situation calling with the virus and so forth, what would be appropriate and frankly, what's the easiest way do you suggest?
Easiest way is to, to withdraw and resubmit.
Let's do it that way.
I would make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the application for the public hearing for the scenic road on Northfield Road.
Second.
Second. Okay, for discussion, we don't have to do with or without prejudice, it's just a straight withdrawal, Adam?
I would do it without prejudice.
Okay. Paula, Tanner?
Without prejudice.
Second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, so all in favor, we're going to do a roll call. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Is Mr. Torgerson with us yet?
He is not.
Okay, and an aye for myself. Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Kweeny. Appreciate your time and, and I'm sure we'll get this figured out sooner or later.
Oh, we will. And I thank you all for your input. And again, I, I take it as positive input and I'll make sure, well, best ability, we'll try to make it clear and get the information to Adam. And Adam, I'd ask if, when you do see the documents, if you think we're missing something that will help the board members, you and I will work that out so we will be more prepared for the next meeting, if that's acceptable.
That we will, Ed.
Sounds good. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we don't have a very busy schedule apparently. Right on to minutes approval for 7/13/2020.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of July 13th, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, it's going to be roll call. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. So here we have a first for me, well, maybe not a first, but the first I remember actually. Actually, some of these predate my, my tenure on planning board, so probably is a first for me on planning. Executive session minutes for release. Now, as these came up, they were all voted on and approved at the next meeting after these. So I'm not sure, we just, we just need to as a collective group approve, release them, I believe, I understand?
That's correct. These are executive session minutes from the O'Brien matter dating back to 2012. As some of you are lucky enough to be aware, when you have executive session, you take minutes, but they're private until the matter is resolved, whether it's a contract for the Board of Selectment or a lawsuit for the Planning or Zoning Board. At the end or the resolution of that process, all of those minutes need to be released as a package because they, they then become public documents and are publicly available as any other board minutes would be. So all of these have been approved by the boards who participated in them at the time. We've checked with council, the O'Brien matter has been discharged and he advised that we would, we should release these minutes at this time. We still off on this with COVID and it doesn't look like we'll be sitting in the same room anytime soon, so we thought tonight was probably a, a small enough agenda to fill up with all of these dates.
I would, can I do, I don't know if I can do it this way. I would make a motion to release the executive session minutes for the O'Brien Homes matter for all dates as listed on the Monday, July 27th, 2020 agenda of the planning board.
Perfect. Second.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All in favor, roll call. Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you, Adam. Moving on to committee reports, Stormwater Task Force. We have, we have two remaining members from previous year and we have a new member is Mr. Dwyer, Todd Dwyer from the Board of Selectment. I was able to join a Conservation Commission Zoom meeting and the three of us had a brief discussion before the meeting started about getting a meeting going. I've reached out to Mr. Rabbit via text, via message, via email. I, I actually left him a phone message. I think it might have been Thursday or Friday. I have yet to hear back from him. If anybody has the ability to get ahold of him, would they please ask him to get ahold of me? As we, we need to set a, a meeting and it takes, it's quite rigorous now with the COVID stuff. We have to, we have to get a Zoom meeting set up by the town manager. And then we have to prepare the agenda that has all that Zoom info. And it has to be advertised the 48 hours before the meeting. So we did, so again, anybody, anybody has contact with Mr. Rabbit, please let him know that I'm trying to get ahold of him.
I'll be happy to do that, Mr. Chairman. I live right next door, so I will be happy to try to do that for you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next item is Agricultural Commission. We have not had a meeting since I last gave the report. The farmer's market is doing very well. I attended one of those. We had 19 vendors at the market last Sunday, yesterday. And the turnout was, was, was great. I would estimate over 300 people in attendance. And in conversation with all the farmers, they are doing very well. And Cherry Hill has returned. They had their first meat market this, this past Sunday. And they're selling their meat. So it's great. And they've got a few other things that they have. So next up is, is Tanner for TCP Building Design Committee?
We have not met. Our meeting is this week, July 29th at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Mrs. Bertram, the Open Space Ad Hoc Committee?
Have not met.
And I think the next two are both. Mr. Brenner?
That's correct. I know that Ms. Baggio submitted me as the representative of this board to both committees. And my understanding as of last Thursday is they hadn't gotten back to her with details and I haven't heard more since. So nothing to report yet.
Good enough, good enough. And then Mr. Torgerson, obviously is not going to have a committee report for capital planning because they have not begun meeting yet. So now we're on to directors' items. And it's not even 7:30.
I know, and now we're cooking with gas. I know, and now we're cooking with gas. Uh, so the stormwater plan for one ninety electric is in the office. If you would make, uh, an appointment, the, the three of you who voted on that to stop by and, and put some ink on it. Um, also, I am going out with Tom Christopher and the Conservation Administrator on Thursday to do the pre-construction meeting with, uh, the folks who are building one ninety electric. It's been sold. Uh, Borrego has sold it to Nexant, who's the same group who did the Northfield Road project. So, a group we're familiar with, a group who's familiar with Mr. Christopher, uh, and who he's familiar with. So, uh, there'll be, uh, a seamless construction process for that, uh, subject to all the conditions and requirements of the permit. So, uh, it's really just a different group that we're already aware of. Uh, MPO, I did look into Mrs. Bertram's questions about the membership. Uh, it is only, well, it's elected members. So they elect sub-regional delegates, uh, and Lunenburg has been lucky enough to have those delegates for the past many years on the MPO. Uh, the selectmen and the planning board have MGT, MJTC representatives as well as, uh, uh, CM, uh, CM, uh, MRPC representatives. So, uh, there's no planning board representation on the MPO unless for some reason they were elected through that, that regional delegate process. Uh, my understanding is that they've, uh, had trouble getting the elections with, uh, COVID and all that, but my understanding is that in the coming months, they'll be looking to do something with that. Uh, low-impact development bylaw, I did, uh, send around to you again, the, um, uh, Westminister draft that we got from, uh, Nick Christofori, who is our stormwater consultant. Uh, the board had, I didn't do anything with it. It's really just a, a draft copy from Westminister, so the board can look at it. Uh, I didn't doctor it because if the board is uninterested in that format and wants us to explore something else, or if they like the content of that, we can start to dial that in for how the board wants to approach that process. Uh, it's information for, for you guys to look at and, and kind of actively make a decision on how you want to approach that.
Adam, I don't know if you're looking for feedback. I thought it was a good start. Um, I liked it. I think that there's more that could be added to it. And personally, I, I plan to research some other communities as well. Um, and I'm happy to share those if I, if I find anything that I think is, um, I think it's a good start.
Yeah, yeah.
Really like us to start in working on a low-impact development bylaw. Um, and, you know, I'd like it to be on a future agenda. Uh, and I appreciate your sending it out. I, I personally would like to see some that go a little bit further.
What I'll say is, I, I'm happy to also look for some. I'm happy to send them around. I, I didn't want to spend a lot of time trying to do anything with it for, for the board to say, oh, this is completely the direction we don't want to go, we want to go in this other direction. So, I'll, I'll look into that.
Okay, and, um, and I also, uh, received that, and, uh, and I marked up the PDF and returned it to Adam. I don't, I don't know if that's appropriate for you to share those comments now that I brought it up in a public meeting. Um, they were, they were basically just, um, some, some corrections as to, uh, the unedited Westminster references and some things about our zones that we, that weren't appropriate from one town to the other. Um, and just clarifying that some of the, some of the figures and, and statements were up for discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I think I can share that. I'll have to look and see if that is considered deliberation or not, um, where it is a markup of your opinion on something. Uh, what I could do is if everybody had comments and submitted them, I could submit back a list of all the comments. Um, and that way, uh, it's a public record of what everyone has said, and it's, it's not necessarily, uh, a deliberation. But I'll, I'll look at that and either, um, I'll send it out to everybody right before the, the meeting that we start talking about it, or I'll send it out in the packet ahead of time.
And I'm happy to add comments as well.
Sure, that would be great. If I get a collection of comments and I send them out as these are the comments that came in, uh, I think that eliminates the, uh, the deliberation outside of the public meeting, uh, but I'll, I'll just verify that.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Um, you're going to notice a theme here, rules and regulations of subdivision. Uh, we talked about this a little bit, and, uh, the board gave some feedback that you wanted to wait for, uh, the master plan before we started looking at these and, and sort of trying to tinker with them. Uh, and I thought about that, and I, I looked at it, and I thought about it some more. Uh, and, and I, I think it's important that the board start to look at these now. Uh, I don't think these are impacted by the master plan. They're more design documents on roadways and utilities. Uh, there's not a lot of, um, I don't want to say there's forward thinking in it, but it's not about, um, some of the stuff that the master plan looks at, which is more long-term and omnibus stuff. This is how people do subdivision construction, uh, and waiting two or three years, uh, could see us start to see subdivisions that we're implementing twenty or so year-old regulations on. Um, I had, I had been working on a draft of this since, uh, the new year. I have it probably about seventy-five percent done. Um, I think it's an important thing that the board work on, uh, especially where we have some time now. Uh, I think mo-, uh, working on the LID bylaw would dovetail nicely with that because all the stormwater stuff that is in subdivisions as far as managing the roadways and stuff, uh, none of this gets into lot size. It just refers back to the, the zoning bylaw. So if the master plan said we should have bigger lots or smaller lots or less lots, um, that wouldn't be impacted by subdivision. It would just be, you know, do we, I don't think the master plan's going to get into, do we have two and a half inches of binder and an inch and a half of top? Or two inches of top and three inches of binder? Uh, and the subdivision's really a technical document in a lot of ways, uh, and it's a process document for how the board takes in A and Rs, what the A and R process looks like, and how we take in subdivisions and what that process looks like. So it's an opportunity for the board to start to look at some of their processes around subdivision specifically, uh, and dial those in. Uh, so I, I'm going to put in a plug for the board to work on and look at this, uh, over the, the next year or so, uh, as something that I think is important for, uh, what we may see coming, uh, in the future. Uh, I'll take input if not, if you want to think about it, and if you, if you want to talk about it, don't hesitate to call or email. Uh, I'm happy to, to discuss it.
Yeah, no, my, my, my biggest concern is, is, um, and as you said, the, the LID and the, um, the subdivision go pretty well hand in hand, uh, especially if they're proposing roads that are to be accepted by the town with technology that we aren't able to deal with.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we, we could deal with it through the LID bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Um, any other?
I think it makes sense. My only, um, comment would be is I feel like it may be best done in a workshop just to kind of keep our agenda more focused.
That's fine, and I mean, we can, we can do that. Um, what I would probably do is send you out the document, and we could find time when we have agendas that are maybe a little less heavy. Uh, and if we only have one hearing or we have a, a wrap-up of a hearing, we could, we could discuss one of the chapters and, and see how that works and, and move forward that way. Um, unless, we're super excited to do extra meetings.
No.
There are no, no.
Not remotely, anyway.
Uh, and the final item I have is, uh, Bright Farms. If, uh, any of you saw the selectmen's meeting from, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, uh, the property up behind Walmart that has had many iterations over the years, and probably most famously recently was the location of the Highfield Village Estates. Um, it was the, the southern portion of what would have been Highfield Village. Uh, there's a proposal from a national lettuce grower to build about a million square feet of, uh, indoor greenhouse there with a headhouse. Uh, so they would purchase the parcel, they would do the site work, uh, and, and it would be, um, an agricultural use. Uh, they're talking sixty to a hundred and twenty jobs, uh, and they would, uh, own and manage the entire parcel. Um, they're a customer of Walmart in Hanaford, and, uh, what I thought was really kind of neat was they're talking about, um, backhauling. So as they get deliveries to Walmart in Hanaford, uh, those trucks would just go and pick up the product for, for those warehouses from, uh, the growing facility and, and come out. Uh, they're still working out the details. Uh, I expect that this board will probably see them. It's the end of July, probably in the next, uh, month to six weeks is, is their timeline. So it's, it went from, oh, we think we might want to do this in, uh, early June to, uh, no, we're doing this and we'll see you guys soon. Uh, it all happened very quickly.
Very good. I, I, I happened upon it, uh, the day of the Board of Selectmen meeting, which was their first introduction to the public through public hearings, meetings, whatnot. Um, I was a little concerned that the Agricultural Commission hadn't been informed or notified, uh, but apparently this has been a very rushed, uh, last-minute kind of a introduction. They were, apparently they were trying to decide, and they did make the decision. Uh, and just for, just for the listening audience, uh, I believe that is what's left of the old Levite Farm, which was the cows on the hill across from the Coach House Inn. Um, and yes, it was the Highland, the, that project was eleven years in, in the planning board. Um, as, uh, was it preliminary or did it finally make the definitive?
It was, it was, uh, eleven years in the board. I think, uh, nine and three-quarters of those were as a definitive.
Yeah. So the, uh, the end result came down to, um, there was clearly written on one of the sheets that had been many years before, uh, something that totally didn't work, and for whatever reason. Um, so I just wanted to update the board and, and the public on, on, uh, where we're talking about and, uh, the history. I, I believe that there's a lot of legwork that's already been done in that eleven years that the current person could quite easily take advantage of.
I, I think that they intend to do that if they can.
Excellent. And, um, if, if they're watching, um, I, I was involved in a good number of years in that and have a good amount of information that I could certainly help you find things. Um, uh, as, as the Chair of Agricultural Commission, uh, I just want to further that, uh, this, this would be commercial agriculture, uh, even though it is not our typical cup, cup of tea, uh, it, it still would fall under that. Um, so that's the end of the director's items, apparently. Um, meeting schedule, six thirty P M, remote participation until further notice. We've got August ten and August twenty-four. Um, so what, uh, what do we have for things that we're looking forward to for those? Anything?
Uh, we'll see. Mr. McSweeney again on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so he does within the two weeks?
Well, he'll need the, um, since we have to advertise.
The advertisement, right.
Uh, and I expect if, uh, we, if there's nothing in the office tomorrow when I get in, uh, August tenth will probably be stormwater and LID based.
Okay.
We'll talk a lot about rain.
Awesome. So then the membership here, our homework assignment is to dive into what he has shared with us and, um, get familiar with it, um, and come up with questions, comments, concerns?
And if you can send me those ahead of time, if you get them to me by like the Wednesday before the meeting, I can put them together so everybody has access to them. And, um, if there's things that need to be answered or research that needs to be done, I can, I can have it ready for the meeting on the tenth.
Excellent. All right, so I guess next we have ongoing items, chapter two oh four, Stormwater and Storm Sewers.
And, you know, I think looking into, to Paul's question and, and saving that for the next meeting might be the, uh, most beneficial unless you have something specific that you guys want to talk about. I don't think we've talked about this much, so.
I had a couple, I had a couple of questions, uh, regarding the stormwater plan as it was put for, as it was put forward, but they're kind, they're very broad, and if it's, uh, more appropriate or better for scheduling to wait until the next meeting, I can do that too. They're not time-sensitive. They're just to help me kind of wrap my mind around, uh, the plan as it was put forward and what I'm reading.
No, that's fine. If you want to, we can easily talk about it.
Great. Uh, so flipping through quickly, and, um, again, I, I know that some of the things I'm asking may be engineering standards or some such that are, that are kind of general standards, and I can accept that as an answer. I just don't have that background. Um, so my kind of overall question was, I see several references, and I could call up specific things, but talking about, um, uh, talking about, uh, setting up, uh, systems to deal with, uh, one inch or some, you know, some preset amount of runoff. And I guess my question is, when we're looking at those numbers, since that's a very specific number, um, is that a number that's based off of, uh, kind of looking ahead and knowing that storms, uh, they seem to be getting worse, and the science backs that up? Or is that when we talk about, oh, planning for one inch as kind of a catastrophic thing or whatnot, is that based on historic trends? Or is that based on future predictions under things like climate change?
Uh, it's generally based on historic trends, and a lot of the specific numbers that come into the, into the, the bylaw are based off of the, uh, EPA, uh, national, or the, yeah, the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, Phase Two permit for the town's municipal separate storm sewer system. Uh, so not to have to say that again a hundred times, it's NITIS, Phase Two, uh, MS four permit. And, and that's, uh, something that currently is issued jointly by EPA and DEP, covers every community in Massachusetts outside of those communities that have their own individual permit. Uh, this is like Boston, Worcester, Springfield. Uh, and then, uh, like DOT has its own permit for all of its roads, uh, and the town is obligated to, uh, meet those standards. Now, if the town felt that one inch was not enough, and we needed to go to one and a half inch, we could be more restrictive. Uh, but what happens i- in those instances a lot of times is we create a separate standard. So, um, unless you, it creates, um, review and, um, submission confusion sometimes. Uh, it's not that we can't do it. It's, uh, generally these things have been standardized, uh, as far as the metrics that they use for people to meet.
Thank you. Um, let me just, I'm flipping through quickly to look at the notes I made on the document. And, uh, so I, I, I am betting the answer is going to be similar. Um, but, uh, for the, uh, in section, let me make sure I have that correct. In section F, contents of the stormwater management plan. Uh, uh, se- section of that, I don't know the, I apologize for not knowing the correct subterms for each, um, part of the bylaw, but standards, uh, projects shall meet, um, the following stormer standards, which are as follows, uh, part D, where it talks about, um, being able to, um, stormwater management system on new development shall be designed to meet an average annual pollutant removal equivalent of ninety percent of the average annual load of, uh, total suspended solids related to the post-contract, construction impervious area of the site, and sixty percent of the annual load of total phosphorus. Um, again, I was curious, just reading through, why the, why the number wouldn't, for example, be ninety percent of the average for pollution, uh, capture?
Again, that's straight from the permit.
Okay.
That's based on EPA science and, and the way that they have calculated it for, uh, for everything. Uh, it used to be eighty percent, and it used to be, uh, do whatever you can for redevelopment. Uh, it's now up to ninety for, uh, for greenfield development, uh, and I think it's sixty for redevelopment, um, which is on the next page.
Yeah.
But can I just ask, if Matthew, if you go back, you said it's ninety percent for total suspended solids. Are you saying it's sixty percent for phosphorus?
Uh, yes.
And we do have the ability to increase that?
I believe that we do.
We certainly, one of, one of the issues, and I've brought this up before, is the original draft that we received. is the original draft that we received simply meets the standards, but there's nothing to say that we can't exceed the standards. And specifically for something like phosphorus, I think Mr. Brenner raises a really good point. Why don't we look at a higher removal rating for phosphorus? Especially if it's a community that has three lakes and numerous wetlands and brooks. So I think it's something we might want to entertain increasing.
That's, that is where my thought is going, and I can't say that I have an answer to say that, yes, I think that's definitely a good idea, because I would want to do research just to try to wrap my head around why those numbers exist now and what the anticipated impact is. But I'm hesitant about minimums in a community that really values the natural and agricultural aspects of it. But thank you for answering my questions, that gives me more direction to do future reading on now that I have a scope of how that's interpreted, how it came to be.
Thanks for looking it over.
Excellent. Is there any more discussion about the two oh four stormwater? Okay. So we're on to our public comment, and I see no public aside from the people running our meeting. So is there any board comment or concern?
No.
Speak now or wait for two weeks? All right, then I guess we've come to the point where I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion about adjourning? Hearing none, roll call, all in favor, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an I for myself. Well, thank you, folks, for participating in one of the most expeditious Planning Board meetings we've had in a long time.
All right, good night, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.